Town Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Braithwaite.
Here.
Sorry. Trustee Wynn.
Here.
Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Tindham.
Here.
Trustee Grover.
Here.
Trustee Rainey.
Here.
Trustee Burris.
Here.
Trustee Fisk.
Here.
Trustee Tisdale.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Welcome to the Monday, April 28, 2014, meeting of the Evanston Township Board of Trustees. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the December 9, 2013, town board meeting. Does anyone want to make a motion? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of December 9, 2013. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is the approval of the minutes of the April 8, 2014, annual town meeting. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is citizen comment. I don't have a sign-up sheet. Does anyone in the audience want to comment?
There's a sheet out there.
For the township.
For the township.
Township.
I'm sorry. You're welcome to. You're welcome to.
It was on a blue clipped. It was a blue. Yes, it was. It was on a blue clip. Clipboard. Yes. Guess I didn't pay attention to which one.
Thank you very much.
I think the township has access to speak.
Ms. Wilson, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Trustee Tisdale. I just want to say, I already made my speech, but I just want, I just hope that the city of Evanston continues to provide the services that the Assessor's Office and the General Assistance Office has been providing for the last many, many years, and the services that I have been providing for the last four and a half years. I just want to continue the services and continue what we've been doing for the taxpayers of Evanston. And I also want to announce that the township, the Cook County Assessor's Office is open for appeals until May 16. So if anybody wants to appeal, please call 311 and ask for the township's Assessor's Office or the city of Evanston's, whatever we're going to be called, office. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Township Supervisor, did you want to recognize the employees?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the town board. This is the last meeting of the Evanston Township Board, and I thought it would be appropriate to recognize those employees that have provided service to Evanston Township. Val Weidman, who is our longest-serving employee, unfortunately is attending a funeral this evening. She will be here later this evening, so I've asked the mayor if we perhaps could take a break during the course of the city council meeting to recognize Ms. Weidman, so hopefully she'll be here shortly. But a member of the staff that is here is Henry Colquitt. Henry, if you could come up to the microphone.
Henry has worked for the township in two stints, starting in November 2010, and has continued here today. As I think you all know, Henry will continue working with the city of Evanston in his same capacity. But the role that he played in making sure that the township was serving our general assistance recipients was absolutely exemplary. So on behalf of the town board and Evanston Township, thank you. It's been a difficult year or two with the move and with the changes in staff, but you have handled it as a true professional. And so on behalf of the many men and women who have been assisted through your hard work, I want to thank you for your service to Evanston Township and present you with a small memento thanking you for your time.
First of all, I'm really under the weather tonight. Some of my voice is almost gone, but this really doesn't, this really doesn't belong to me. It belongs to the many, the thousands and thousands of people, not just through Evanston Township, but down through the years that I've seen in social service, the disenfranchised, the, those that are living in parks and living on trains and have multiple addictions and mental illnesses and just so many unfortunates, you know. I kind of represent, I'm an advocate for social justice and, you know, the change has come. I want to, I guess, say thank you to all of you who, I don't know, supported me publicly or privately. I guess for all of those township employees way back before me, you know, I guess I want to thank them too for just, you know, making it possible for me to work for the township. Evanston is a great place to be. It's been very, it's been very good to my daughter. She just performed, what is it, something modern, Millie? And there were, it's a musical, and there were two performances, one Friday and one Saturday. And there's two more Friday and this coming Saturday. I saw a child I had never saw before. She had a major role, and theater is her passion. And, I mean, all of that started from her being raised here by me. So Evanston has been very good to my child. I'm glad to be here, and I just hope that moving forward, we can have a very, very good working relationship, and we can take care of people. That's pretty much my goal. That's it.
And Madam Mayor, also not able to join us this evening is Carmen Cruz. Carmen has worked for the township since August of 2008 in a variety of capacities. Over the last several months, she has been serving as the office manager for the general assistance operations. She will also continue in that role as a city employee, and so will make sure that she's recognized appropriately. And then Ms. Weidman hopefully will be with us in the nine o'clock hour.
Thank you very much. Next is Resolution 1 TR-14, Evanston Township dissolution. Does someone want to make a motion? I move our action on Resolution I TR-14. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any other business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. City Clerk, do you want to call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, April 28, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's proclamations and public announcements. It is National Drinking Water Week, May 4 through 10. And there was a presentation of awards at ANPW at 6:00. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to be here, but I heard that it went well and the kids did a terrific job. I have one proclamation to read. Evanston Public Service Week, May 4 through 10, 2014. Whereas high-quality and professional public service is essential to Evanston's quality of life, and whereas employees are our most important resource, and whereas city employees strive to provide the highest-quality service when within available resources in a courteous, responsive, efficient, and effective manner, consistent with the 2014 theme of "Proud to Serve," and whereas city employees provide high-quality performance striving for the highest standards of personal and professional conduct, integrity, innovation, and whereas city employees serve citizens in hundreds of ways through the city staff and all departments, and whereas city employees represent the city government in their day-to-day interactions with citizens, and whereas the citizens of Evanston deserve a high-quality, professional, responsive public service today and in the future, and whereas to maintain a high-quality and professional public service for future generations, the city must attract and retain talented people with the required skills and who will use those skills in service of the people of Evanston. Now therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdale, Mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim May 4 through 10, 2014, as Evanston Public Service Recognition Week, and commend all city employees for delivering quality public service. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of public employees in providing responsive and effective government for Evanston. So I'd like to thank all, everyone on the city staff. That concludes my announcements. City Manager, do you have public announcements?
Just one, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. This past weekend, we had a number of activities celebrating Earth Day and Arbor Day. We had community volunteers, over 200 community volunteers, at 11 cleanup sites throughout Evanston, picked up 130 bags of garbage and 105 bags of recycling. A ginkgo tree was planted in front of the Fleetwood Dordane Community Center as an honorary Earth Day tree, and several hundred community members came to the Fleetwood Dordane Center on Saturday afternoon to celebrate. So I want to thank our Public Works Department, our Sustainable Programs Coordinator, Catherine Hurley, for their outstanding work, and probably most importantly, all the many residents who came out to work and pick up trash and recyclables throughout a whole variety of public areas in Evanston. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, do you have announcements?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any announcements for this evening.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. Because of the number of speakers, you'll each have two minutes and about five or six seconds, so I apologize, but please be brief. I'm going to read the first four names, and please come up and be ready to speak. Jonathan Nusma, Junaid Rizki, Mike Vasilko, and Isa, AKA Ty Gibbs. Go ahead, if you give your name and address.
Thank you. Jonathan Nusma, 1408 Dempster, in Evanston. And I am Vice President of Citizens Greener Evanston, and I just want to congratulate the city council and the mayor on achieving our first climate action plan goal of 13% emissions reduction by 2012. Citizens Greener Evanston looks forward to working on our next goal of a 20% reduction by 2016. And the only way we're going to do that is if we continue to use 100% renewable energy under our aggregation contract. So just speaking in favor of 100% renewable aggregation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Junaid Rizki, I'm going to have to cut this short, but you just presented the Sheridan Road project, and one of the issues I have, of course, is are you replacing the water mains under Sheridan Road? The water main from Central Street going north there broke several times, actually more than several times, had to be fixed. When the city did the signal at the corner of Sheridan and Isabelle and Ridge, it didn't replace the water main for about 100 feet. And when you redo this Sheridan Road, you're going to probably tear everything out, the old pavers that are under there, and replace it with a foot of concrete, and then the asphalt. If you don't replace that, the water line is over 100 years old. It shows it on the drawings, and I was told that may not be replaced as part of this project. I find this very interesting, that you would spend millions of dollars to redo Sheridan Road and not fix the water main. That's all I have to say tonight on that project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm next. Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston. I'm on two lists. I don't know if I can combine on the non-agenda and agenda, or no. Nope.
It's your time. You can come up and speak twice.
Okay.
Or you can try to combine it.
Well, just on this issue, since time is limited, on the issue of the animal shelter, my wife and I have been longtime supporters of CARE for a very long time. My wife, who couldn't be here tonight, just wants to express that she's very upset about the, basically, the eviction of CARE and how it's transpiring. She does want to thank Alderman Rainey and Alderman Burris for speaking out previously in favor of approaching the problem differently and for recognizing the turmoil that may ultimately affect the cats and dogs that have been cared for at the shelter. Thank you.
My name is Isa Kabir. You know me as Ty Gibbs, Evanston resident. I was late. I'm ill-prepared, actually. I wanted to comment on the LEP program that's going on here. We also have, like, at Northwestern, this $3.75 billion goal. We have the partnership that you, Mayor, will give campus construction jobs to residents. This non-compliance of the contractors, I think it should be a stiffer penalty. I'll be speaking more at future meetings, but we need to have more Evanston residents at these jobs. I mean, it's hundreds of millions of dollars going through here, you know. I can, while I'm here, two years ago, I noticed that every elementary school, middle school, there was construction going on, you know, roofing, mason, tuck pointing, general labor. No Evanston residents on there. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, but, I mean, the compliance of, let's just say, I used to work for Boulder, for instance. I could have landed a job at Landmark, but CJ, you know, the boss of Boulder, you know, called CJ, because I was injured, and so he sort of like, white-balled me, black-balled me, so I didn't get that job. But, you know, even Boulder is one of them who didn't even hire Evanston resident. Last year, they paid a little, small, little fine, but we need to get some residents in there so at least we can get a chance to get into the union, you know, and then start, you know, get some power and start some kind of force going, because, man, there's a lot of, especially, I'm just speaking for the black children, you know, even the women, the men and women out here, you know, it's rough out here. You know, I don't see none of us, no black women, even on these projects, you know, at, for instance, on Emerson, at McHugh. I go up there constantly talking to, I went there earlier, talking to the project manager, what's his name, Ray Cisco, at McHugh. I go up to Power.
Mr. Gibbs, I need you to wrap up.
Okay. All right, well, all right, I appreciate your time. You'll be hearing from me again. Thank you very much.
You're welcome to come back anytime. Next is Ann Mallor, Jeffrey Mallow, Kirsten Carlson, and Karen Strauss.
I'm turning my time over. Before I start, this is very old. It's reminded that here is the state. I will read this aloud. My name is Ann Mallow, and I live at 2315 Hartcell Street. And I was a longtime member of CARE. The first thing I would like to read is from the year 2000, October 14. Whereas all funds obtained by CARE in solicitation for the Evanston Animal Shelter will be utilized in the renovation, repair, and expansion of the Evanston Animal Shelter, and whereas the assistance of CARE in soliciting funds for the renovation, repair, and expansion of the animal control shelter is in the best interests of all the citizens of Evanston, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Evanston, Cook County, Illinois, Section 1, that CARE is authorized and designated as a fundraising organization to solicit and obtain funds for the renovation, repair, and expansion of the Evanston Animal Shelter, and Section 2, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval in the manner provided by law, adopted August 14, 2000, signed Mayor Lorraine Morton. Here's some citizen comments from the, this is also from the 14th of August, 2000. Mary Somerville of 2110 Central Street urged support for the resolution to permit CARE to raise funds to expand the animal shelter, noting that the kennel facilities and adoption areas are overcrowded. She stated that the dedicated volunteer staff provides an invaluable service to the community in one of the most humane shelters in the area. Gail Lovinger, 2225 Simpson Street, board member, community animal rescue effort, expressed gratitude on behalf of the board and volunteers for the resolution to allow them to raise private funds to expand the animal shelter. She thanked the ANPW committee for its support and special thanks to Alderman Rainey, city staff, and facilities manager, Director Max Rubin. Now we jump to April 26, 2014. In August 2000, the city passed a resolution which stated that CARE was the authorized and designated fundraiser for the shelter, and that all funds obtained by CARE in solicitation for the Evanston Animal Shelter will be utilized in the renovation, repair, and expansion of the animal control shelter. Gail Lovinger, on behalf of the CARE board, thanked the council for passing it. In its annual report with the AG's office filed August 14, 2013, the CARE board admitted that it had designated $569,135 for the, quote, "building expansion." By August 2013, the board knew it was under scrutiny, so this had to be the minimum that it felt compelled to admit. Just 11 days after making this public filing, at the board meeting on August 25, 2013, the CARE board voted to transfer everything but $29,000 out of the building fund. They have since offered to repay this to the city. At present, there is almost $1.3 million in CARE's possession, which the CARE board has openly stated that it intends to use for another shelter. These funds were supposedly to be used for the Evanston Animal Shelter, as above statements indicate. As Evanston residents and longtime contributors to CARE, we feel that the city in its role as a partner with CARE has an obligation to the cities of this community to collect its fair share of the money ostensibly raised for the animal shelter.
Ms. Mallow, I need you to wrap up, please.
Okay, well, I'm almost done, and then I'll switch to my husband. We hope that the city of Evanston will do everything in its power to recover this money for its citizens. Am I through completely?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, yes, I have two more letters, but...
Well, if you want to give them to the city clerk, he'll make sure that we all see them.
I will do that. Thank you very much.
Kirsten Carlson.
I had foot surgery this morning. I was in the operating room at 7:00 AM, and I am here now because I think this issue is that important.
Do you want to chair?
No, because I can lead on the podium.
Okay.
I am Karen Strauss. I am a proud 20-year resident of Evanston. I am a resident of Judy's First Ward, and I was a dedicated 14-year, every single week and every single fundraiser CARE volunteer. I was a single mom, and I brought my kids to the fundraisers if I had to, so I did not miss a fundraiser. I thought it was that important for us to expand the building, because the building we have now, not a ray of sunlight penetrates that building. At least the dogs get out once, twice, three times a day, but for the cats, they need a new facility, and I am a cat volunteer, and I worked for 14 years to try and make that dream a reality. And I do not want to see that dream, that million dollars, walk out of the city of Evanston. And that is why I am here, foot surgery or no. I want to make a few points. First, I unfortunately cannot be here on May 12, so if you are going to discuss the finance issue again, if you could do it on May 19, I'd really appreciate it. In terms of the substantive points, I want to make three. They are partnership, fraud, and hoarding. First, partnership. For whatever reason, the Corporation Council has looked at this from every angle except the angle that will work. In his last memo, he says, newsflash, the Attorney General has more regulatory power than the city, of course, but the Attorney General was not in a partnership. The city and CARE had a partnership together, and he even unearthed documents that totally substantiate that partnership. There was an August 2000 resolution passed by the city council at CARE's request, and it made CARE the, quote, "authorized and designated fundraiser, exclusive fundraiser for the Evanston Animal Shelter." CARE then, for the next decade, acted pursuant to this partnership agreement, and as a result, every single donation can, business card, fundraising event said, quote, "for the Evanston Animal Shelter." How do I know this? I was there. And I also have photographs attached of the donation cans to the letters that I'm going to pass out to you. Second, fraud. The city should not only recommend that the Corporation Council explore the issue of partnership law, but the city should definitely recommend to the Attorney General's office that the board be investigated for fraud. Their own filings prove it. CARE, on August 14, 2013, made a filing with the Attorney General's office, referred to by Ann, where they said they had $569,000 in the building fund. But more importantly, they said that they had evaluated all subsequent events, and they had nothing to disclose. But just 11 days later, 11 days, on August 25, 2013, I was there at the board meeting when the board voted to transfer all but $29,000 out of the building fund and into the operating budget. I ask you, why does an organization with expenses of only $90,000 per year need to move hundreds of thousands of dollars into its operating budget just 11 days after telling the Attorney General it didn't have any subsequent events to report? And the last issue I want to cover is hoarding.
You do need to wrap up.
In a letter to all its supporters on April 14, CARE said, quote, "While we seek a new location, we will provide foster homes and adoptions for the dogs and cats continuing in..." We had 22, count them, 22 cat adoptions in one weekend in April, because they're taking all the animals out of the shelter, and they are hoarding them, and they then intend to adopt them out later.
We do need you to wrap up, please.
So I would ask that the City Council take the four actions that I've listed. If you could, please.
Yeah. Next is Chuck Carrington, Lisa Meadows, Leigh Anderson, and Ron Fleckman.
I live at 825 Oakton, and I just want to thank the council for putting together these aggregated contracts and going with 100% renewable energy in the past, and I really encourage you to, moving forward, that we stick with 100% renewable. And I think it's important to meet our plans. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lisa Madeiras. I work for the Illinois Sierra Club, and I'm here in solidarity with our 350 active members here in Evanston and also on behalf of the Go Clean Go Local Coalition. Evanston recently received national recognition as one of over 90 communities across Illinois that chose 100% renewable energy through REX. You know, Governor Quinn made a statement on our coalition's report in support of this effort. So I just wanted to quickly urge the City Council to build upon their record of environmental leadership and choose 100% renewable energy. What's especially exciting to me about this year's proposed contract is Home Field gave us a bid for renewable energy from Illinois and adjoining states, so that's a lot more local than what we've requested in the past. So if Evanston chooses clean and local energy, you'd be voting for a cleaner environment and a stronger economy for Evanston out of Illinois. So thanks for your time, and I hope to celebrate this clean energy victory with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies first.
Hi, Leigh Anderson. I would like you to strike down P3 tonight, which is I do not want you to grant a special use permit for the planned development of 1515 Chicago Avenue to remove an elm tree. In 2004, I was very active in trying to get the elm trees in this town vaccinated, and it was successful. And in 2010, we received a grant to do a scientific study about our trees, and it was no longer an emotional plea from the citizens. There is scientific evidence about how important our trees are, and they determined that the elm trees were the most valuable species in our city, and every elm tree above 24-inch diameter gave you the biggest benefit. And guess what size the elm tree is in 1515 Chicago Avenue? It's larger than 24-inch diameter. Your ordinance protects that tree right now. It has a five-foot setback, and you can just uphold your normal ordinance, and that tree will be protected. You do not need to grant them a special permit, and that tree is part of your infrastructure, and it pays you. Part of what this report was so amazing to me was that the trees give you $3 million a year in benefits. They give you stormwater mitigation, energy savings, air quality improvements, carbon dioxide reductions, and annual property value increases. They give you $3 million of money every year, and you only spend $2.5 million a year on your forestry budget, so you have a net gain of $500,000 a year. That's money in your pocket, and you're always out of money. Every time I talk to you guys, you never have any money. So why would you let a money tree be cut down? It is the most valuable species of tree you have, and it provides benefit. It also prevents people's basements from flooding, and every elm tree in the city is important. When I started doing this, we had 4,000 trees, and now we have 3,000, and then it's 2,500. It's hard to keep them alive, and this elm tree stayed alive without a vaccination, without being watered, without pretty much anything. All you have to do is protect it, so I encourage you to protect your infrastructure. You should have many ordinances in place to protect the trees, and I don't know why you would grant them this permit. You've already given them two, I think you've seated them two parking spots on Chicago Avenue, which provides revenue for the city. I think that's $70,000 of revenue. But this tree is in the back, and I think it's because they want--
Leigh, I do need you to wrap up.
All right. You are giving money away, and you need money, so keep the money tree. Don't let anybody cut a tree down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, city manager, city clerk. My name's Ron Fleckman. I live at 1110 Hull Terrace, and I'm here on behalf of the aggregation agreement that's going to come before you this evening. But I wanted to talk a little bit about an event that happened yesterday, and it was a celebration of Earth Month that was sponsored by the Interreligious Sustainability Group and CGE and the city. In it, the guest speaker was the city manager from Boulder, Colorado, which has been pretty much known as the number-one environmental community in the country. The one thing he spoke about very clearly and being very envious of Evanston about was our ability to aggregate the community and choose to purchase 100% green energy. This is coming from the manager of the City of Boulder, who is apparently at the top of the mountain. We kind of think Evanston belongs there as well, but it was recognized that how important and how much of a contribution that makes. So I urge you to support that action that you'll be hearing about tonight, and thank you for your support for the last few years.
Thank you. I'm calling a list of people who signed in at the Planning and Development Committee meeting but hopefully want to speak now. You certainly don't have to, but Bill Schirmerhorn, Richard Tao, Sebastian Gazura, and Greg Hughes.
Hi, I'm Bill Schirmerhorn. Thank you for your time. I'm here to support 1515 Chicago Avenue. You know, there's one thing that I see the sign here that says 1863. I think that we have to have a long-term view of Evanston, and I think that this project in general is going to be a great addition to the City of Evanston and the long-term view that we need to take so we can have another 100, 150 years ahead of us. It's going to bring in a lot of taxes. It makes a lot of sense. It fills a need to have an extended stay hotel, and I think that there's one tree in the back that is an issue, and I love trees. I think it'd be great to keep, but I think, as the forester said, it's probably not going to survive. So I just want to make sure that you guys take a long-term view, and when you have a project that's a win-win, you've got a great developer who's got the best interests of Evanston at heart, I think you should be in full support. Thank you for your time.
Richard? Richard? Sebastian, go right ahead.
He's gone.
He's gone. All right, Greg? You're it. Thank you.
Oh, Greg Hughes at 2737 Central Street. I agree with Bill. I'm in favor of the project. I think it's a first-class development for the City of Evanston, and it's a great benefit. And also, with the green roof, there's some other good benefits. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to thank everyone for sticking to the time limits, and some of you went way under them. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Special Order of Business, the Animal Shelter and CARE. I called everyone. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
I was on that agenda.
All right, Mr. Rizki. Judy, there are a lot of them across to have.
I'm just going to be brief. When the reservoir study was mentioned, several public officials said that it would answer all my questions. Unfortunately, I have a big question, and that's really the operation of the water business that the city can't seem to answer. And I think there's a very simple way to answer that question that this council needs to support, and that council needs to basically take the water business and break it into two businesses. Basically, a distribution system, which the Evanston residents pay for, and basically a water plant operation, which the Evanston residents only pay 20% for. When this analysis is done, you're going to be very surprised what's going on, and at the same time, $3 million is taken out of the water fund and goes to the city. All these things need to be accounted for, and if you do what I ask you to do, I'll actually come stop speaking, and I'll wait till you do that. Because I'll tell you why. When you do it, you're going to know what's going on. You'll have a very good idea. You hire a consultant to do that, and you'll be very surprised. I don't think you'll be surprised, but you won't be too happy with what you're going to find, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizki. All right. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff. My name is Matt Rogers. I live at 133 Clyde Avenue, and I am also chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I come for you to stand before you tonight to request that you examine some loopholes that we have discovered in our zoning ordinance. We recently had a case come before us in which we had someone who was converting a single-family, three-bedroom home into a two-flat that would have eight bedrooms in it, therefore drastically increasing the density of the property. The reason it came before zoning board was because they were making a small change to the footprint of the building. Because of the fact that they, it appears now, have decided not to make that change to the footprint, they are going to be able to develop that property, therefore almost tripling the density of that particular location. So I would ask you to examine either something in the ordinance which would allow for density changes over a certain percentage to be addressed before the Zoning Board of Appeals, or to put more strict parking regulations in, since that was the one thing that we were able to hang our hat on when this came before us a couple of weeks ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, yes. All right. Could you please come up and speak in the microphone?
Are there any other sheets? Okay.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that reference that Mr. Rogers just suggested to Planning and Development.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. My name is Christine Westerberg. I live at 525 Grove, and I'm the president of the 525 Grove Condo Association. Just wanted to briefly speak about the 1515 Chicago development. The neighbors have been here before. We've talked at previous meetings about how this development really has met with support, for the most part, from neighbors. However, we have one serious concern that's been on the table since we saw the plans, and that's the request for relief from the five-foot parking setbacks at all the lot lines. And there are two areas where that causes grave concern. The first is at the alley. Where that lot line lies, the developer is requesting to extend the parking lot all the way to the alley, even though the adjacent buildings do observe a five-foot parking setback. So there are concerns with the neighbors about how that reduced setback will mean reduced visibility and swing space for vehicles in the alley. We would encourage the aldermen to take a look at this alley for themselves. It's highly traveled. It has residential traffic. It has commercial traffic. It has pedestrian traffic. It's also in very bad shape, and resurfacing that north-south alley right now doesn't appear to be on anyone's radar. So with a bad surface and no setback, we are concerned about traffic congestion in that alley, and we don't think, in that sense, the development meets the key standard for avoiding undue traffic congestion. Finally, the setback to the south, I think you all know this, there is the large tree above 65-foot that graced that area for a long time. Without a setback, that tree is lost, and the development doesn't meet another key standard, which is to preserve a significant natural feature, which could benefit, by the way, both hotel visitors as well as the community. Now, we've heard a number of different statements about the health of that tree. I've asked one of our neighbors to come and submit letters from two different landscape companies confirming that the tree could survive construction if it's adequately protected. And while the developer has offered to add trees at different locations, we do think that sustaining what we have is important for the city. We've heard a lot about our environmental leadership. It seems strange that we can't work a little harder at this one. And there is something to be said for maybe working a little harder at preservation when you're the last one on the block, and we would encourage the city and the developer to keep the setback or to reorganize the parking so that the tree can remain, or to take a look at porous asphalt and see how that might help allow the tree to remain as well. One last point. I was at a presentation this past week where Stephen Ross, who's the executive vice president of Amely--
Do need to wrap up, though.
Just almost done. Stephen Ross of Amely was discussing his process for building the Amely Evanston on Chicago Avenue. He said he was very proud of the fact that he did not require or need any variances from the city in order to build his complex. We would just appreciate the same consideration, looking at the importance of keeping setbacks for these new developments and respecting what we already have. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Taft. I'm the president of the Evanstonian Cooperative Apartments at 1508 Hinman. We overlooked 1515 Chicago Avenue. I want to encourage the City Council to save the tree that is there. One of the things that should be considered, one of the things that's been discussed is not only the health of the tree. The tree is quite robust. We've been told that by numerous arborists and things like that, including the city's arborist. One of the things that has been said is that it wouldn't survive construction. I've been in construction for 45 years. I've worked on some of the most sophisticated construction projects in the upper Midwest and anywhere else there is. So I can tell you, a skilled constructor would have no problem working around that tree. So also, I brought to the attention of the city staff, the use of porous paving, porous asphalt paving for the parking lot, which would, among other things, decrease the need or the size for the retention structure. And that porous paving would work very well in this application. There's some discussion about how expensive it is. It's not that expensive in its use and its value for the area and for, as a model, for how to, you know, behave, how to do things in an environmentally sound way. It's a very, very interesting and very high-quality type of construction. So I would urge you to resist the removal of this tree. Would urge you to follow the city staff's thinking about the porous paving. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, who else is on the scratched-out list?
I am. I'm Dennis Kelly. I live at 525 Grove Street, and I also have an office at 828 Davis Street downtown. While acknowledging the fine work of the developer and the cachet of the Hyatt name, it's difficult for me to understand why we have not held fast on the five-foot setback. It's difficult to believe that the developer could not design parking for the number of spaces needed while utilizing the already additional parking under the Davis Street building and the garage on Chicago Avenue one block north. We residents on the east and south sides of the alleys have repeatedly informed you of the current excessive amount of residential and commercial traffic in those alleys, and it seems to have fallen on deaf ears. Commercial traffic is especially heavy, while some trucks remain unmanned for as much as 20 minutes, and I've watched, I've counted, and taken pictures. The driver is making deliveries during that time. I won't mind looking at the building. It'll be a nice building. I've stayed in myriad extended stay hotels throughout my career, but I think losing the five-foot setback at this particular location is at least unfortunate, and I hope I'm wrong. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mike Fasulco, 2728 Reese. I'm going to try and rush through this. Evanston is in the midst of debating more about our water system. I came across a resource, a book called Water 4.0. The book addresses a wide spectrum of water and sewage treatment issues. Most valuable about the book is that the author shares what other cities across the nation, across the world, do to confront many of the same aging infrastructure issues that we face in Evanston. I believe the book will inform the council and hopefully offer alternatives to the city as it plans to invest heavily in upgrading our water system and our sewer infrastructure. One common theme is that the water sewer utilities are usually demonized by the general public for their wasteful spending, when in fact, cracked and disintegrating sewer pipes and reservoirs and old lead water pipes cost a host of much more expensive problems. You also probably know that the combined sewer systems, like Evanston's, are not a good engineering solution, and nor are they a model of sustainability. So I encourage you, I've got some materials to leave with you, and I encourage you to please browse through them before you make any more decisions about investments in water and sewer infrastructure. I also came across an article recently that talked about fluoride being added to the water system, which we do, and is a common practice, but there are new issues being raised about some potential damage being associated with fluoride in infants and regarding developing brains. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and ask you to look into that issue as well. Lastly, I want to remind you that it was almost a year ago to the day today, and the practice still continues with the Wisconsin Badger car ferry that travels between Wisconsin and Michigan. It dumps, each time it floats, it dumps four tons of coal ash into Lake Michigan. That practice has continued for 40, or 61 years. It is a practice that, on a yearly basis, you know, it's 160 times a year that it does so. It's an incredible amount of coal ash, which contains all kinds of toxic chemicals, which nothing happened a year ago, and I brought it up, I'll bring it up again. I hope someone here on the council will make the right phone calls and take care of that. I will hand out some materials to you during the next speaker's talk. Thank you.
Thank you. What?
Hi. I'm Amy Silvestri. I live at 525 Grove in Evanston. And we have petitions here that I'd like to present, signed by people who object to the special use request for the extended-stay hotel. Thank you.
Just bring them up here. You've already spoken.
I was going to do non-agenda.
You've got 30 seconds.
Since it's National Drinking Water Week, I wanted to say that we should take the fluoride out of our drinking water. There are numerous, numerous cities across this country that have done research and taken it out. City of San Francisco, City of Portland, Oregon, very large cities take the fluoride out. It steals iodine from people, and iodine is needed for your thyroid. It can slowly, over time, make people in your city very sick. I suffer from thyroid, and fluoride is very, very damaging to me. I take it out. I have filters all over our house, and I encourage you to have clean water here. So please take the fluoride out of our drinking water. It's not good to be swallowed. It's only good for your teeth. Once it's in your stomach, it's very bad for you.
Thank you. All right. Now, does that finally conclude public comments? All right. I think we're done. Alderman Rainey? Could we have the consent agenda, please? Or no, I'm sorry, we've got the animal shelter. City manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before I move on to that, Alderman Wilson pointed out a statute in the state of Illinois code that requires fluoridation of drinking water. So if that is something that we wish to pursue, we will need to go to the Illinois General Assembly to do that. So with that, we have an update report on where we are with the animal shelter. As you know, the city council authorized me to issue a request for qualifications to interested parties who may wish to work with us as a volunteer animal organization partner. We received two letters of interest, one from the Anticruelty Society, and another from an organization called Saving Animals for Evanston. That information was provided to you and is also on the city's website. Hopefully, with the council's approval of the Board of Animal Control this evening, the mayor Tisner will move forward with those appointments, and that group will convene. And so the next step would be that we would work with that board for the creation of a request for proposals to move forward there. So my hope is that that will happen over the next few weeks. In the meantime, we are gearing up to be able to handle the day-to-day operations of the shelter once CARE vacates on Friday, May the 9th. Commander James Pickett is here from the police department. Commander Pickett has been working with the animal control staff and the animal wardens and the volunteers, and is here to give an update on the progress we've made over the last couple of weeks. Commander, good evening.
All right. Thank you, city manager. Good evening, mayor, Alderman, city clerk, city manager. My name is James Pickett. I'm a commander with the Evanston Police Department Community Strategies Bureau, but I'm also overseeing the everyday operations of the shelter, especially during this transition period. And I just want to give you a brief update on things that we've accomplished thus far. We still have a long way to go. As of today's date, April 29th, I mean, 28th, 72 citizens have contacted me directly with interest in volunteering their services or continuing to volunteer their services at the shelter. 37 citizens contacted me via the city email, my city email, I'm sorry, and 35 have utilized the city's volunteer email system that was set up. I have personally responded to each of the individuals, thanking them for their interest for volunteering or continue to volunteer. And this information has been forwarded to Chief Animal Warden Tekler and Volunteer Lisa Kaplan for scheduling purposes. Many of the volunteers are CARE members who are currently continuing their normal volunteer hours and have expressed interest in continuing to volunteer. The new volunteers, the new volunteers will go through a training process with the, whatever organization takes over after May 9th. One of the things I want to mention, I know there was a concern about whether or not we would have volunteers, we have plenty of volunteers. Actually, we have some fraternities and sororities from Northwestern University who have volunteers. So we're talking about 50, 60 people from each organization. So we probably, I don't want, this, we probably have in excess of 130, 140 volunteers altogether. We completed an inspection of the city-owned storage facility that's located south of the animal shelter and discovered its size dimensions will be sufficient to do the animal behavioral testing. The only issue that, there were some items still located inside that would have to be removed. But we had a meeting with CARE, and they are leaving the shed that they own, which is just directly next, right next to our storage facility. Once CARE removes their property from the shed, then we'll be able to move the stuff from the storage facility into the shed that CARE used to use. This would give us ample space needed for behavioral testing, and I knew that that was a concern. On June 3rd, 2014, at 2:00 PM, Deputy Chief Wasney, Chief Animal Warden Tekler, and myself will participate in a conference call with representatives from SAFER in order to finalize the upcoming behavioral training and certification, and to discuss future steps, strategies as we move forward. On Monday, April 21st, 2014, Chief Eddington and myself met with CARE Board President Linda Gao and other CARE Board members in order to discuss the upcoming transition period. Ms. Gao stated that CARE will finalize all outstanding animal adoptions before May 9th, which is the final date for the CARE and the city of Evanston's partnership at the shelter. And for informational purposes only, currently, there are only three cat trial adoptions that need to be finalized by CARE. On April 24th, 2014, the new volunteer waiver form was finalized and approved. Effective today, the new working hours for city staff commenced. Chief Animal Warden Tekler will work Monday through Friday from 10:00 AM to 6:30 PM. Animal Warden Rose will work Tuesday through Saturday from 12:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And Animal Shelter Aid Lori DeBecky will continue her current part-time schedule, which is Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This gives us ample coverage at the shelter at all times, except Sundays. And this leads to the last point. Once the new volunteer organization takes place, the new animal adoption hours will be as follows. Monday, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM. Saturdays and Sundays from 12:00 PM until 3:30 PM. The only difference is that now there won't be any adoptions on Wednesdays. So so far, that's all we have. I know we have a long way to go, but especially after the new organization takes place, that's when we'll be able to move forward. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Madam Mayor, we also have a Facebook page up for the shelter, a Twitter feed up for the shelter. We're soliciting for donations of supplies and food, so I think we're well in hand, and we'll be ready to move forward as business as usual at the shelter after the 9th. If there's any other questions, Madam Mayor, the second item also deals with the animal shelter, and that is a supplemental report from the corporation council regarding the issue of private citizen donations to CARE. Perhaps Mr. Farr would like to give just a brief overview of the memorandum and the attachments, and certainly be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, city manager, Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green grant for our corporation council. With respect to the supplemental opinion, I think that, you know, there is some voluminous information that's also appended to the opinion, so I won't go into all of that. But I think the takeaway is this. We were dealing with some incomplete files, some scattershot organization, and it took the law department some time to begin to reconstruct that. With the passage of time and the framing of the debate and the evolution of the debate, we did some further due diligence, and we uncovered the documents which are attached to the report. With respect to the issue of standing, the original opinion remains the same. Also, the other point that I want to touch on is the law department is precluded, ethically precluded, from maintaining causes of action against private citizens of the city of Evanston. It's also ethically precluded from offering legal advice or legal opinions relative to a private citizen's cause of action. So this implicates the issue of recovery of funds. I, ethically, and the law department is ethically precluded from taking a position on this. And the reason is, is we've heard debate, not tonight, but in other forums and in other meetings, where certain residents said, "City of Evanston, don't come after my money." So essentially, the law department cannot ethically, in good conscience, and in complying with the canon's professional responsibility, get into the middle of that. However, what we did do is we sourced everything with respect to the filings on file with the Attorney General. And there's three statutes that are in play here. There's the Charitable Solicitation Act, there's the Charitable Registration Act, and there's the Deceptive Practices and Fraudulent Behavior Act, Solicitation Act. All of those reposed jurisdiction on this issue with the Illinois Attorney General Charitable Trust Bureau. Those entities that file, as CARE did, are legally obligated, in their filings, to make certain representations, certain statements of fact, and, and statements relative to their position on what their purpose is. And we have those filings, the most recent one, the 2012 filing, is attached to the report. So that gives a lot of information into what CARE's own representations and what its own commitments to the Attorney General are. So with respect to the issue of what is the proper jurisdictional entity, body to take this matter up, if that is so desired by this city council, it's unqualifiedly, unquestionably, the Illinois Attorney General.
Who takes it to the Attorney General?
The reference can be made by, officially, by the city council. It can be made by a private citizen. I'm sure they also monitor this issue, but we can certainly make the appropriate reference.
Okay, but any private citizen can do so as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
So, Madam Mayor, we believe we've fulfilled the council's request for information. If you wish to direct me or the corporation council on this matter, please do. Otherwise, I believe we've fulfilled your requests.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes, I'd like to know, do, are we aware of any private citizen having done so?
I'm not aware.
Would the Attorney General, would the Attorney General contact the city informing us of that, or?
Not necessarily. I mean, they, they follow their own process, and there is a process the Attorney General follows, which is customary with many administrative agencies. They seek what's called informal dispute resolution. So they make conference with a party that's the subject of a complaint, and they also make conference with the person that makes the reference. The city standing alone would not have access or knowledge of such a referral.
Would a private citizen making that request of the Attorney General have, get the same response as if the city council made that request?
I can't, I can't forecast what the Attorney General's responsiveness on this particular issue would be. That's outside my realm of expertise.
Alderman, Alderman Fisk, are you done? Thank you. Alderman Rainey? Madam Mayor, if, you know, I really hope nobody on this council makes a move to contact the Attorney General and file any kind of complaint against this organization. If there are private citizens in this town who have given money, who feel their money is being misspent or misdirected, let them file. We didn't give any money to this cause. In fact, we said, and I remember the city manager saying, "Oh, this, this agreement has expired." And so I just hope that we back off. I think we've done enough damage, and I think we should let private citizens who feel, like I said, their money has been misspent or misguided, or misdirected, let them file a complaint. They're perfectly able to do so. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Please, nobody here, Alderman Fisk, don't go there. Please. I know, I know. All right. Alderman, tend him.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I would like is to ask or make a request, or actually propose, that our city managers sit down with CARE to discuss the money in question. I think, to the degree we can provide that next step, I think the residents, taxpaying residents of this community would be very grateful that we did show that interest. And this is simply a discussion between the manager and the certain board members of CARE.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam. I guess this is just a general question, whether it's to the council or the public, is there anyone that's actually asked for their money back? I mean, I feel real awkward trying to ask for money that I haven't donated. And I think if you donate it to an organization, and there are a million of them in Evanston, just ask for your money back. A simple request, you should have a copy of, just ask for it. And I think if they don't, then maybe it's a whole different conversation, but I think I'd agree with Alderman Rainey on this, that we just need to move on from this and allow our private citizens to follow up and say choose. But again, I think that's the first place to start with, a simple letter of request from the private donors before we contact any Attorney Generals or go down that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, tend him.
Before that kind of language goes any more viral than it probably has, I don't think anyone is requesting their money back. I think the request is that many in the community felt the money belonged and which would stay at the Evanston Animal Shelter. This is by no means a request for money back. This is simply saying that this money was given in the name of, directed to, and for the development of the Evanston Animal Shelter, and that it should be used in that manner. That's the manner that it was intended. That's the manner that CARE solicited funds under, and I think a lot of residents believe that's the proper approach. No one wants their money back. I've not heard that. If you've heard that, you know, please set them straight, that that's not even a reasonable consideration. But I think we owe it to residents to, to pursue that.
Alderman Grover?
Mr. City Manager, Mr. Bobquid, have we had that discussion with representatives from CARE? Has that been part of the discussions so far, or?
It has not.
Well, then, it would seem that you don't, we don't know until we have that discussion about.
My recommendation, should the council wish to take action, would be to have that discussion versus taking other actions.
Yeah, I think that seems a really reasonable way to go.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I agree with that.
So, city manager, you have your direction.
I'm not sure that I do.
Alderman Wilson?
Perhaps we can politely ask for the building fund money that was in the original account and see what happens.
So, Madam Mayor, then, I believe, then, please correct me if I'm wrong, that I'm being asked by the council to have a conversation?
I believe that's what you're being asked.
Okay.
Alderman Wilson, did I blow the light, or did you want to speak again? Thank you.
Then, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I will attempt to have that conversation, and I will-- and I will report back at its conclusion.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I move approval of SP1.
Sir.
A request for a letter of interest for volunteer animal organizations.
Your mic is off.
Pardon me?
My mic, Anne. No, it needs to be, that's perfect.
One more time. Update regarding request for letter of interest of volunteer animal care organizations. I'm not sure what we're supposed to do with this, but it's for action. Do you want to discuss the letters, or what?
All we're asking is to receive, all we're asking is to receive the report.
All right, I move that we receive the letters of the report.
It's been moved and seconded to receive the responses to the requests for letters of interest. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.
And Madam Mayor, was Alderman Wilson's a motion for SP2, or was it just a discussion?
I do move that we proceed with SP2.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to proceed with SP2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we will proceed with SP2. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, the consent agenda is as follows. Move approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 8. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening and asked that you approve the payroll through April 6, $2,624,609.88. The city bills, April 29, 2014, $3,637,765.55. We ask also that you approve renewal of the 2014 summer food program with open kitchens and the not-to-exceed amount of $2.49.8 per lunch for an estimated total of $86,200. We ask your approval of the Northeastern Illinois Public Safety Training Academy 2014 membership dues for the Fire and Public Works Departments in the amount of $23,545. Your approval is requested for the execution of a contract extension for the 2014 crack ceiling contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Denler, in the amount of $70,000. This was a partnership initiative, and this is the first of two possible contract extensions. Approval is also requested to authorize the Manager to execute a single-source contract with Landscape Concepts Management to install rodent abatement and replacement plantings for the 14 planter beds in the city's right-of-way adjacent to Sherman Plaza in the amount of $40,377. We ask your approval to allow the Manager to execute an agreement for engineering services for the Sheridan Road Chicago Avenue Alternative Analysis in the amount of $265,099.84 with Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited. Funding is from Washington National TIFF and the 2014 CIP. We ask your approval to authorize the purchase of lighting material for the Arrington Lakefront Lagoon renovation project in the amount of $26,358.4 from Steiner Electric. We ask your approval to allow the Manager to execute a contract for the 2014 water main replacement and street resurfacing CIP 1 project with A-Lamp Concrete Contractors in the amount of $2,129,128.10. Approval is also requested for the electricity aggregation supplier agreement, and I'm going to have the Chairman of AMPW address this because we have, we have an aggregator, a supplier, and an amount and a term. Also, A5 is Resolution 23R14, amending the plan of operation and governance for the City of Evanston's electricity aggregation program. We ask your approval for Resolution 24R14, which authorizes the City of Evanston to enter into an agreement with the Cook County Assessors Office for access to a geographic information system. For introduction this evening is Ordinance 60014, which amends the minority women and Evanston-based employer and local employment program, program, for the penalty section increasing from $100 a day to a 3% of the total project value penalty. Your approval is also-
Alderman Rainey, can you remove that, please?
To remove it? Okay. All right, I'll remove it. The Ordinance 38014 is, amends Title 10 of Motor Vehicles Traffic Chapter 11, traffic schedules, and corrects an error and codifies the original intent to include in the residential exemption Parking District B, Greenwood Street, Hindman Avenue to Forest Avenue on the north side. We ask your approval of Ordinance 51014. Caraveli has requested the city act as the conduit financing authority for their debt issuance as a part of the expansion of the renovation originally started with the city's initial conduit debt issuance in April 2010. That's for action. For action also is Ordinance 41014, by which the City Council would amend Section 10115 of the City Code to establish a four-way stop at the intersection of Broadway Avenue and Jinks. We ask your approval of Ordinance 43014, decreasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for La Macina restaurant doing business as La Macina Cafe at 1620 Orington. We ask your approval for Ordinance 44014, which increases the number of Class C1 liquor licenses for La Macina Cafe doing business as La Macina Cafe at 1620 Orington. Ordinance 45014 is for action and decreases the number of Class I licenses for Ward 8 LLC during business as Ward 8 on Howard Street. We ask your approval to increase, this is Ordinance 46014, amends Section Evanston City Code of 2012, to increase the number of authorized Class D licenses from 49 to 50 to permit issuance to Ward 8 at 629 Howard Street. Excuse me. Ordinance 40014 is for action and recognizes the cessation of Evanston Township and codifying the city's assumption of the duties and obligation of Evanston Township. For action also is 52014, which creates the City of Evanston General Assistance Fund and defines other city duties and obligations due to the cessation of the township. Under Planning and Development, P1, is Ordinance 59014, we ask your approval to introduce this ordinance that provides for special use for a type 2 restaurant, Kung Fu Tea, at 726 Clark Street. For introduction and suspension of the rules is Ordinance 58014, which grants a special use for a type 2 restaurant, Frio Gelato, at 1701 Simpson Street. Action will be handled by the Committee Chair. Ordinance 53, 53014, I believe, should be removed from the consent agenda and will be addressed by the Committee Chair. Ordinance 32014 grants a special use for Plan Development 835. This is being held and will be continued on May 12 at that City Council meeting. Under Human Services, approval of Resolution 29R14 is requested and authorizes the Manager to enter into eight-month lease agreements with the artist leases at the Noyes Cultural Art Center. This involves a 3% increase in the tenant monthly leases effective May 1 through December 31, 2014. Also, Ordinance 54014 establishes the Evanston Board of Animal Control. That's for action. Under Appointments, the Madam Mayor has recommended the following reappointments. Environment Board, Kevin Glenn; Housing and Homeless Commission, Rick Morgan, Kevin Kane; Preservation Commission, Amy Reese-Burrow and Jack Weiss; Public Safety Civil Service Commission, Fred Tenenbaum; and Zoning Board of Appeals, Mary Beth Burns. And with that, Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Nine to nothing. The consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, do you have Administration and Public Works?
Yes, Madam Mayor. A4, the approval of the 2014 Community Choice Electrical Electricity Aggregation Supplier Agreement. Staff recommends that the City Council authorize the City Manager to execute a master agreement to provide services to the aggregated group with Illinois Power Marketing Company doing business as Homefill Energy located in Collinsville, Illinois, for a 36-month term with a 100% renewable energy mix for the fixed price of $0.07644 per kilowatt hours for the first 24 months, and of the agreement, and of $0.06923 per kilowatt hours for the last 12 months of the agreement. The terms will be from August 2014, 2014 through July 2017.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2014 Community Choice Electricity Aggregation Supplier Agreement as described. Any discussion? City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman J. Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes. Congratulations, everyone.
Madam Mayor, A7, Ordinance 60060-014, amending the minority women and Evanston-based employers and the local employment program. The committee and staff recommends consideration of an amendment to the, to the MWEB LEAP revisiting the, revising, rather, the penalty, the penalty section from $100 per day to a 3% of a total project value penalty.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City Manager, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I submitted a memorandum to the Council on page 215 of the packet. The staff has some continuing concerns about the impacts of this proposal, and would ask that, if the ordinance is introduced this evening, that it come back as second reading at your meeting on May the 27th to allow us some additional time to gather data to share with the City Council.
We agreed to it.
I'm sorry.
You agreed to that, right?
I wasn't sure that was not part of the written motion, so I just wanted to make sure that that was the-
Oh, okay.
It was, yeah, I think it was just agreed to sign. There was no agreement to hold the second reading until the end of the month. So, that's my request.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Alderman Braithwaite?
I guess I have two questions before I make my statement. This is probably the first time that I've sat on council where a City Manager has actually pulled something off of consent agenda, so I'm curious to know if that's ever been done before, and particularly when something is just for introduction. So, I don't know if corporate counsel or someone can just answer that question for me, just as a matter of procedure?
Under the Evanston Municipal Code, I'm allowed to participate in the discussions of the City Council. I'm not allowed to vote, but I'm allowed to participate.
Okay. So, in our history, have you ever pulled something off of consent agenda that's just up for introduction, is my question?
I believe I have. I'm sorry, I can't give you a specific.
Okay. So, anyway, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, this is something that we have discussed in, at length, at our AP&amp;W meeting, and given the time, I don't know if, I'm going to rehash it, but we had five committee members, the members of council who don't participate on the AP&amp;W, that were comfortable with the changes in the ordinance and recognized it as just for introduction. And my request was to have it sent to council for discussion, if there are any other points that need to be made as it relates to the penalty. Again, to the members of council who did not have a chance to participate, this, this change is strictly about driving complacency. It isn't about driving revenue. We discussed in great length that there are no changes to the ordinance in terms of reporting or monitoring. I would remind everyone that this is an ordinance that's supported by federal and also state statutes. So, again, it's just my desire to move this thing along, just given the fact of where we are in the construction season, and I hope that if there are any concerns, that we've been discussing this for the past year, to provide them in writing, and we will address them as a committee or we'll address it as a council. But it's not my desire to send this to Human Services.
But we discussed that. Yeah, but we, so we just said we weren't going to send it to Human Services. I guess what we didn't do was to say that we would delay the reading until the second meeting in May rather than the first meeting in May. I think that's what we just, if I'm understanding correctly, that's the only thing that we didn't say.
Okay.
In other words, it won't be coming up at our next council meeting, but it will be the second council meeting. That's the only thing we elected to say. I think that's the only clarification that the City Manager is asking for. I, that's all I'm hearing.
Okay.
Is that, and on the rest of the committee.
And that's correct. Alderman Holmes, I had a conversation with Alderman Braithwaite several days ago and suggested that, and he was in agreement with that at that time. Well, no, no, I, I will not repeat our conversation, but I will say for the record that I want this to move to council for, this is just for introduction. So, if it's the, obviously, there are four other committee members that are there. If everyone else heard that it would be delayed versus going straight to council, then I'll just ask for a shake of the head. But I did make the recommendation that it go to council for discussion.
Rather than to Human Services. As a chair, I'm just making sure that I followed through with what we said we would do.
Right.
And we will not, it will not go to Human Services. It will come back to council, but it will come at the second meeting rather than the first meeting to allow staff time to come with what they have.
Is that everyone's understanding, who participated, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Burrus?
That was what, that was what was said.
I concede. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
All I was going to say is that no matter when it comes back, it'll come back at the council meeting. There is absolutely no passage of this or no process by which this would ever go to Human Services because it's on the AMPW agenda. So, it's been introduced, and I'm voting for it, whether it comes back at the first meeting in May or the second meeting in May. And I think, you know, the privilege of the Manager and the legal department is to get all their ducks in a row and get all the information that we need, and I'll give them another two weeks. I mean, it's no big deal. I mean, I know it's two weeks, but, you know, it's been years, so let's give them two weeks to get it right.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Basically, just reiterating, mine, and I watched it from the TV in the next room, but my understanding was exactly as Alderman Holmes and Rainey reflected. But I do need, I feel like I need the additional information in order to make an informed decision, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, Alderman Holmes?
That would conclude my report, Madam Chair. I mean, I'm Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next is Planning and Development. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, suspension of the rules was made during the consent agenda for Ordinance 58- 58014, granting a special use for type 2 Frío Gelato, 1701 Simpson Street. I move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 58014 for Gelato. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes. I think it's right on my route to City Hall.
Madam Mayor, I'm just going to comment on P4 before I do P3. P4 is 835 Chicago Avenue, that plan development. That's being held at the request of our staff till May 12, that council meeting, so it was not dealt with tonight in committee. I move approval of Ordinance 53014, which grants a special use permit for a plan development at 1515 Chicago Avenue.
Second.
All right, and may I speak to it for a moment?
Yes, you may.
As you all know, we were presented with two ordinances at our last meeting, one, the process of which I still disapprove of, or the strategy, but anyway, one item, one ordinance had to do with saving an elm tree in the alley, and the other had to do with moving forward with certain requirements to the developer if the elm tree was removed. The council supported the ordinance that is 53014, which remove the elm tree, allows the developer to remove the elm tree. We have a memo in our packet indicating that the developer has gone a bit more of a distance and has agreed to pay $30,000 for the removal of permanent spaces on Chicago Avenue, as well as pay for one half, which is an excess of $30,000, one half of reconstructing, not resurfacing, the alley that has been in question here. So, I would hope that the council support this, as several members of the community mentioned. This is a needed addition to our downtown, and also, it's probably one of the most compliant plan developments that I've seen in a long time. I mean, the five-foot setbacks are the exception, but otherwise, it is really in a great deal compliance, and also, our staff and the commission all support it, and so do I.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have been in discussions for a very long time about this particular project, and I commend the developer for making some fairly significant changes to improve the project and being responsive to neighbors' concerns as well as my concerns. I would just caution the City Council about a couple of things here. We have, by allowing the developer to not have setbacks, is creating a long-term precedent, which I think we really want to avoid in our alleys, especially next to the downtown. I was very interested to hear that the Amely Project respected the fact that those setbacks were, the five-foot setbacks from the alley were important, and they're just as important here. We have had conversations with our residents in other blocks, especially by Main and Chicago, where there is a lot of congestion in alleys, where these alleys right next to business districts are pretty much used as public thoroughfares, with trucks using them, trucks parking in them, residents of high-density buildings having to maneuver in and out of their parking, and I just don't think that we're moving in the right direction if we allow this project to proceed without the alley setbacks. Now, the other part of that is that if the setbacks were respected, that would automatically save the tree. I mean, that's just, that and a little bit of care would save the tree. The residents have reached out to two arborists, well-known, who agree with Paul Decistino that the tree is healthy and that it's likely the tree could survive construction. There are never any guarantees about that. You'll never find a doctor who will guarantee your operation is going to be successful. There's always a little bit of a hedge, but with a little bit of cooperation from the developer, we could save the tree. The other point I think we want to consider here is, are we really moving forward in the way that we want to as a progressive community? We talk about porous concrete. We've used that in the downtown, in the parking. It's working very well. Why aren't we using that here? That would basically result in the water retention or tank that's required on this site to be minimized, and again, allow more root structure for the tree. This isn't just a tree. These aren't just tree huggers. These are hundreds of people who live on this block. It's the last tree on the block, and as I said, if we just simply respect those setbacks, that tree will be saved. But the larger problem really is that if we're going to be a green city, if we are going to be progressive, if we are going to tout environmentally responsible ways of dealing with development, we need to start right now. We just can't, we can't be saying to every developer, "Well, that's okay. We'll start with the next one." We need to start now, and we've come so far with this development, and I'm so proud of everyone who's been involved in it and the meetings that have been held, the developers' willingness to listen and to make changes. This is such a tiny thing. These setbacks certainly could be accommodated by on the site and by the developer. I would really, really encourage him to be a good neighbor, he lives four blocks away, to be a good neighbor, to be responsive to his neighbors, and understand that the setbacks especially are very, very important to ensuring that as we develop the downtown and as we have more and more traffic in the downtown, as our streets become more congested in the downtown, these alleys really are important, and the setbacks that go along with them are really critical to the proper functioning of our traffic.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, and I agree with Alderman Fisk. I do think that the developer has come quite a long way, but I also agree with Alderman Rainey, and this project, when you look at it in comparison with other developments, it is very, very compliant. And I don't want to minimize the loss of the tree. It's a significant tree. It's been there a long time. It's weathered a lot of storms, adversity conditions, so I don't want to minimize that, but if you keep pushing and push and push, you're going to get to the point where the development's not going to work. It's not going to happen, or it's not going to be what they originally set out to do. And then you have to be careful what you wish for, because if you push too far and this doesn't work, the next thing that comes down the road may well not be this compliant. It could be something significantly less compliant and much less desirable, so it's with significant reluctance at the loss of the tree, and also, I recognize that there's likely to be some notable inconvenience with the traffic, but compared to what could happen and what could be done there, I don't think that this is unreasonable. I think that they've, in my view, come enough to get my support.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have thought about this a great deal, and as much as I appreciate and have always supported maintaining all of our elm trees, I read through our city arborist memo to us that said that he did not think the elm would survive the construction, and even one of these letters that we just received tonight from one of these experts said that the adjacent area to the tree can't be disturbed within 15 feet of the trunk, otherwise, the root mass will be compromised. And so, I very reluctantly think that the tree will not make it through the construction of this project, and so, I appreciate that the developer here is offering to plant three significantly larger street trees on Chicago Avenue and to plant another very large tree in the alley that will survive. It's with great reluctance that I say that, but I intend to support the project.
Thank you. Seeing no lights turned on, Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say one more thing now that I've heard other council members speak. The, and this is directed toward the residents. We've dealt with, before I was on the council, with some significant interest in this property in order, that would really be inappropriate for that block. I mean, we hoped from the beginning that when we knew that the block was going to be developed, a long time ago, there were two projects that came forward, which would have been very, very, very destructive to the residential character of that block. Several years ago, when I first came on the council and we knew what this, that this site was going to be actively developed, we worked with staff and found a developer who wanted to build a boutique office building on the site. He had his financing, he had his 75% rented, he had everything, his ducks in a row. This was a local developer, and it sounded wonderful. Unfortunately, the property owner refused to sell, refused to engage in conversation, and there's nothing we can do about that. That's the purview of a private property owner. At that point, the plan for an extended stay hotel came along, and from my conversations with residents, it wasn't the first choice, but it is a lot less disruptive than some other things that we were thinking about might occur on the site. And I have to thank the developer for being sensitive. I'm hoping a little bit that by the experience that he had and listening to the neighbors, that he anticipated some of the concerns that were going to happen and cited the building to minimize the obstruction to neighboring property owners in a sensitive manner, and I think he did that. He also made changes to the facade of the building and facades of the building that faced all directions, so that the folks living on Hinman would have a better view of the building from the rear. It wouldn't look like the Cook County Jail. The front of the building would be improved, rather than looking like it was wearing a, what do you call, mortarboard. They scaled that down, they improved the appearance of the building. They were more respective, respectful of the landmark sommet. Those are, those are critical things to the neighborhood as well. So, we understand that this building, given its height, given its density, is pretty close. It's not perfect, and I think we could have done a perfect building. I think with a little bit of give on those setbacks, with saving that tree, we would have a perfect development, but we don't. But I hope that you all will understand that this is going to pass tonight, and it is going to be better than anything that we have seen, and I think Alderman Wilson may be absolutely correct, and that is that something else coming down the pike might not have a developer who would be so sensitive to most of your concerns. So, I'll be supporting this, but I wanted you to know why.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. City Clerk, I think we're ready to call the roll.
She's still not speaking.
No. No, I just haven't turned her light off yet.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Sorry about that.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Nine to zero.
The motion passes. Alderman Rainey, does that conclude your report?
It certainly does.
All right. And Alderman Holmes, you have nothing.
Call of the ward.
All right. You're right. Call of the ward. Alderman Braithwaite?
I'll be brief, Madam Mayor. First, just a quick comment to the staff. Two Saturdays ago, we attended, myself, the mayor, Alderman Holmes and Alderman Grover, the mayor's summer youth employment program, and I just wanted to say with the city manager to please pass along, excellent, excellent event. I can't say enough words, and I measure that not by the number of kids, but how prepared they were. I thought it was a very professional job fair. The kids were better prepared this year than I've seen in the past. They came equipped with resumes, well-dressed, and I think that through our continued partnership, the mayor's commitment to workforce development in this program, that it's going to continue to really have a great impact on our youth in town. So, thank you very much, Wally, to the staffs. Mayor, it's your initiative. Just an excellent event.
And Alderman Braithwaite, I forgot to say, and I'm sure you mean to say, that we still need more jobs.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
And I think it's an open challenge to the Chamber of Commerce and our downtown businesses. I'll also take on the challenges to our West End businesses to really participate. I'm sure next year, this event is going to be bigger, and I think we had over 600 students attend, and through the staff, 500, what's that? In one day.
One day.
One day. Huge success. So, I'm sure with your continued focus, you'll probably have 1,000 kids next year.
Well, then, I'll need 1,000 jobs next year.
Then you'll need 1,000 jobs, yes. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the days last week, I've lost track, I stood in for you as mayor pro tem at the wonderful program at Northwestern, recognizing volunteers throughout Evanston, Northwestern students, ETHS students and citizens, and it was a really, really impressive event. I am just dazzled by what the ETHS students and Northwestern students do with their free time, and it was really a terrific event. I want to thank Northwestern and Melissa Parker for doing a terrific job. And then yesterday, I attended the Citizens for Greener Evanston gathering at the Methodist Church, United Methodist Church, and our city manager spoke and was excellent, and also, we did hear from a representative from Boulder, Colorado, and a lot of good ideas are going on in both places, and I think we have some good new initiatives to start thinking about here in Evanston. And I want to thank Citizens for Greener Evanston for everything that they do, and Catherine Hurley for doing a great job with them, too.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I want to thank everybody who was involved in the distracted driving enforcement last week and Ridge Avenue running notably through my ward. If it weren't, let's put it this way, it was easy pickings. I drove down twice just to kind of see what was going on, and even though there are sirens like every other block, like lights going on, they're still pulling them over like crazy. And if the idea of the prevalence wasn't so disturbing, it would almost be entertaining, but it is disturbing. So, I do hope that this makes an impact and gets people thinking about this, and I know that numbers-wise, you know, accidents are down, but tickets are up. We're writing more and more tickets, and just a reminder to everyone that this is an important, an important issue, and, you know, just in my day-to-day life and in having conversations with people, the favorite response I get is, "Oh, I only do it at stoplights. I only do it when I'm stopped. I'm totally stopped." I'm just going to point out, and maybe the press can remind people, too, you know, you stop, the light turns green, and you go, but you don't know what's going on around you because you've been focusing on that phone, and that's where you miss things. You're not aware of your surroundings, so hopefully, this will really highlight this issue and get people thinking more about it. So, thank you for everybody involved, and thanks to Jane for her ongoing support and leadership in that area.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo what Alderman Braithwaite said about the job fair, but also want to congratulate the staff and citizens on Earth Day for on Saturday. It was just a fabulous event at Fleetwood, and I got to help plant a tree, so I was excited about that. It was a really wonderful afternoon, and for those of you who are surprised that we're going to have this... And for those of you who are surprised that we're going to have this Leto retail at the corner of Simpson and Dewey, just drive by there. It'll be great.
I'm planning on stopping. I'm not driving by. Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three things. One, just drive. Two, we got a lot of good stuff happening on Central Street east of the Metro tracks. So I sent out some updates in my newsletter, but you got to know that the 1700, 1720 Central Station apartment building has really brought some good attention, economic activity and interest to that part of Central Street, which has needed it for so long. So feeling that one vacant lot has had repercussions for a number of the properties around there, and you are all to credit with that. And then you got to be really proud that Evanston Township High School just won a number 21 in the state of Illinois ranking recently. I can't remember if that was the US News World report or the Washington Post ranking, but our high school keeps climbing in the rankings and is doing really well.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Alderman Fisk for voting for the 1515 Chicago Avenue project. I think that's an example of some really decent leadership on the council. I know she struggled with that vote, and wherever you are, Judy, thank you. Maybe she quit. I don't know.
No, she's moving. She's moving tonight. The store is moving.
Oh, oh, wow. Well, thank you, Judy.
There she is.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
She heard you.
Excellent, excellent move on her part, and she could have easily have not voted for it. I attended St. Francis Hospital's Earth Day celebration last week, along with Catherine Hurley, and a very nice presentation by the city of Evanston and many, many other vendors. And the work St. Francis is doing in terms of staying green and being green and getting greener is really amazing. And I think they're going to start promoting themselves as being the greener hospital in the city of Evanston.
Well, good, maybe we'll set up a contest.
That's probably going to happen. I want to wish the mayor happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mayor. And finally, on electrical aggregation, do you know how many communities in this state have voted against aggregation? It's been on the ballot all over, and people vote against it. I really hope that city manager, that those communities where the managers represent a community that has aggregation will promote it to the other communities. I don't know what they're thinking, but they're not supporting it.
Well, and even communities like Oak Park have now gone away from green energy, and their residents are in a huge uproar because they have recently voted to no longer have 100% green energy. So I think we can do very well.
Did the residents vote, or?
No, the city council in Oak Park.
Well, we know we're better than Oak Park, so anyway.
Thank you.
Just encourage you to do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to all the supporters of the Youth Job Center who attended the annual gala on Saturday evening. As we all know, workforce training for Evanstonians, particularly Evanstonian youth, continues to be vitally important, and YJC plays a key role in that. So thank you. I know Alderman Wilson was there, Alderman Tindham was there. So thank you all.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Madam Mayor, could you ask the city manager if he could comment on us being the most exciting city in Illinois? I just think that's so exciting.
Well, Alderman, I don't know if I can beat that, you know? There is a website, a real estate website out there that today ranked the most exciting communities in Illinois, and Evanston was number one. The criteria that they used were restaurants, the lack of fast food restaurants was a positive, the number of nightlife areas. So for whatever that is all worth, we are the most exciting community in Illinois. We're very happy about that. And Madam Mayor, why, we've got the microphone. Val Weidman from the Evanston Township staff apparently was not able to join us this evening, but I did want to take a moment to thank her for her over 25 years of service to Evanston Township. She'll be leaving the staff over the next few months. She's going to help wind things down, but will not stay with us. We're looking for other opportunities for her, but I really want to take this opportunity to thank Val for all of her fine work over many, many years at Evanston Township, and we have a nice memento to present to her, which we'll do at a particular time. And Alderman Wynn mentioned the fine work that Melissa Parker did on the volunteer event, but something else you should know about Melissa Parker. This past Saturday evening, she was inducted into the Illinois State High School Basketball Hall of Fame.
Right.
She was quite a star at Elgin High School and made many scoring records that still stand, and so she was inducted into the Illinois State High School Basketball Hall of Fame on Saturday evening. So that's nice to crow about the accomplishments of our staff members, and congratulations to Melissa on that great honor.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I have a very exciting motion, and that is to convene into executive session. Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, C11, and C21.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.